Okay, we have presentations by Yeshiva International.
Mr. Mayor.
This evening, we have the annual invitation to attend the menorah lighting on the front lawn. And with us is Rabbi Mendelstein to extend that invitation.
Thank you, good evening. My name is Rabbi Mendelstein, live in Ponchatrain in Southfield. I'm with the Lubavitch Yeshiva in Oak Park. And I want to again take the pleasure in inviting you all to the annual menorah lighting on the lawn of the Southfield City Hall. I want to recognize once again the freedom that we have to live in this great country, where we can practice our religion freely and to be in this great city, where the city is happy to facilitate that, including the menorah lighting that takes place here every year. This year it will be on December 13th, in a week from Wednesday at 5:30 PM, right outside the doors behind us. We're going to have a great fire show as we've had the last couple of years, and the children really like. We're going to have hot soup. And of course, we'll have students from the rabbinical school who will be here to liven us up and dance. Rain or shine, snow or whatever the weather is, we'll be there. So everyone is welcome to join us. Special for this year, I wanted to recognize and dedicate the event in memory of Mr. Sidney Lance, who was instrumental in starting this tradition and helping with the city facilitating it, going back, I think, at least 15 years. So may this be a memory for him, for all the years of service that he's given to the city and to the community, and to continue spreading the light. And I hope everyone can join.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can you make sure we have no wind and no snow on that day? Seems like every time we have it, we have a strong wind and snow, right?
Right.
We don't want it this year. We want a nice evening.
We'll get the flames lit, no matter what.
Okay, before our next presentation, I want to reiterate the fact that we have a sign outside that no beverages and/or food in this chamber, and we will be enforcing that this year. Beverages will not include water, H2O. I've gotten numerous comments from individuals about the need for water. But beverages, any other beverages and/or food will be prohibited from this particular chamber. Thank you. The next presentation is by Mayor Seiber.
I could have the screen.
This is a sidewalk. You have something called walkability now. So they've got to go through the burn and they have a pathway, okay? And this is where it presently is, that's the parking lot and then the restaurant. When you go through that, you've got to be even with the sidewalk, you've got to come in here. So it's 18 inches, he had to go down, he had three.
It's a kick in the head.
Do you don't see that, what these people are doing? And then we pulled the side button, and then we went. We got four guys, they're hard sick.
Good evening.
Tonight, I wanted to present something that the council, the city administration, and I have been talking about for the past two years. And that's a recap of where we are with our neighborhood investment initiatives. Before I go further, I would say that it became very apparent following the mortgage crisis, where at one time, or any given time, we had as many as 1,600 vacant homes in the city. We also had hundreds of homes foreclosed by either banks, mortgage companies, or the Oakland County Treasurer. Following that was the devaluation of our tax base. Southfield lost a third of its property tax base, resulting in such things as cutbacks, for instance, in library hours, because libraries supported by a separate millage. Parks and Rec, supported by a separate two-mill millage. And I do not think that we are at a crisis stage. I felt that if we did not do something, we could very easily slip into a crisis. So we have been working for the past two years on a whole series of initiatives to support Southfield neighborhoods, to keep them safe, attractive, vibrant, and to raise property values. As we all know, following the mortgage crisis, homes dropped at unbelievably low prices in Southfield. Homes that were, in the average of maybe $150,000, $160,000 were being sold for $10,000, $15,000, $20,000. This is not a good situation, and we are living the ripple effect of that mortgage crisis and the greed that was perpetuated by forces outside of the city of Southfield. So issues facing our Southfield neighborhoods. We have an aging housing stock. Majority of our homes were built in the 50s, 60s, and 70s. We have an aging population in Southfield. Our mortgage crisis of 2007 to '10 caused many bank foreclosures. We had a decline in property values during the recession, and we've had a major increase in the Oakland County property tax foreclosures, and a significant increase as a result in rental homes, increasing group homes. We have what we term as second-wave home buyers. These are people who bought houses in Southfield at considerably reduced prices. And we have infrastructure issues in our neighborhood. Many of our sewers and water lines were built 50, 60, 70 years ago, and need to be replaced or upgraded. Before I go further, I want to make it clear that I have nothing against rental homes. The state law now, for some time since John Engler was governor, has done something called community mental health, which put group homes into neighborhoods. My objection is the concentration of the number of rental homes and what that impact it has on a neighborhood. I could point you a Southfield map and show you a neighborhood with 407 homes, and today only 52 are owner-occupied. The people in this neighborhood tell me, this is not a neighborhood anymore. These people come and go constantly. Landlords aren't keeping up with their properties, and a whole number of issues, because the people that are living in the neighborhood do not have a real stake in the neighborhood other than renting a home. And as far as group homes go, we now have 60 in the city, 60 group homes. And again, my issue is with, when is this enough? And further, the same thing with the rental homes. When is it enough? And I think that we are at a point where we could be at a tipping point with rental homes if we don't take some steps. So we've come up with a number of things, investment initiatives, and our goals are these, simply, maintain, excuse me, attractive, safe neighborhoods, improve public infrastructure, raise property values, assist our older residents with home yard care so that they may remain in their homes longer. I'm certainly, as is our Commission on Senior Adults, an advocate for aging in place. And we also want to reduce or contain the number of rental homes. So what we've seen is a dramatic rise in rental homes. I know in my own neighborhood, we only had a couple out of 460 homes. Today, we have 40. And again, a lot of this is because our properties were bought up by speculators, they were bought up by flippers, real estate investors, home rental companies, and have turned these vacant homes into rental properties, many times without any real maintenance to the home. I have seen homes that were foreclosed and bought by, and become a rental home, that within days, somebody was living in the house. Nothing was done to the outside of the house or the landscaping. And it, again, devalues our neighborhoods and puts stress on homeowners. So one of the first things the council did two years ago was, they took the whole, there were loopholes in our rental home registration inspection programs. Today, every rental home in the city must be registered. If you are not living in the home, even if it's a relative living in it, it's still considered a rental. The person who owns the home must live in it. The rental home must be inspected every three years, and the landlord pays for the registration and inspection fees. Our aging population, we want our older, as I said, to age in place, but home care and maintenance becomes a challenge for many seniors. And so we have programs to help them. Three of the programs that are on this slide, this represents in the last two years, $1.5 million investment in these neighborhoods. The SHIP program is for, or no interest rather, loan program for major repairs, such as replacing a roof. Our CHOR program works with a couple of hundred clients, $500 per client for yard work, minor repairs. And then we have the Oakland County Home Program, which is major repairs, of which we've drawn $1 million to help our residents. I would also note that the SHIP and CHOR programs are part of the Community Development Block Grant Program. The president has advocated doing away with Community Development Block Grant. We talked about this at the last meeting, that we depend on these federal funds to help our residents. As some of you will recall, and certainly the council is very aware, we found that many of our Westside residents were having trouble with failing septic systems or failing wells. And so several months ago, the council reduced the tap-in fee, and we created, we've always had the 3% loan program, but we created a new one, zero-interest loan for qualified, income-qualified people, and that's paid back upon the sale of the property. Anybody that's lived in Southfield for a while knows that we are on a mission to replace and repair roads, add sidewalks, replace gas, water lines, storm and sanitary sewers. We're doing a major thing on the east side to eliminate basement flooding with the separation of, in that part of the city, the storm and sanitary sewers are combined, we are separating them. This is a multi-year project. We've also tapped outside assistance. One of the organizations that's been working in Southfield for years and has done scores of homes, this one done on Pierce Street last June, is Oakland Rebuilding Together. Volunteers come and help with financing and donations of materials from corporations, and we have done this annually. Any number of homes have been done repeatedly. Another group that we've tapped is Habitat for Humanity, does a similar program, and it's called Rock the Block. We've had Rock the Block for the last two years, and 26 homes have been done in this program. And it includes everything from yard work to repairs in the house. In this case, they were painting a house. But I would point out, there's a misconception about Habitat, that they give away things for free. Habitat's logo is, "It's a hand up, not a hand out." We've also done, many of our seniors have trouble raking their leaves, so something we started last year was called the Big Rake. And last year, we had 250 volunteers. Turned out, we did 75 yards. Last Saturday, we had over 100 people attend. We have done, total in the month of November and through December 2nd, we had 350 volunteers, and 115 yards were done for elderly and handicapped persons in our community. Normally, some of this work would be done through the CHOR program, but this is a way of stretching those dollars from CHOR dollars, instead of going to leaf raking, they can be spent on maybe a plumbing repair or something else. And again, I want to credit Lawrence Tech and the Southfield Public Schools. Most of the volunteers of the 350 people have come from both of those entities. Also, we've had a couple of businesses. This is DIR, that was a company that did get a tax abatement, and they came out and forced one afternoon to rake leaves. The Southfield Parks and Garden Club is a relatively small club, but they make a big difference in our community. They do yard makeovers for CHOR houses, everything from trimming bushes, planting annuals, whatever else needs to be done on the outside. They do litter patrols, and they do an annual garden walk, which showcases a different neighborhood in the city every year. We also have a number of corporations that come forward. A few of them are here, Comcast, Eaton, Federal Mogul, the Kappa Foundation does neighborhood, as well as park, or cleanups and improvements. Again, we're looking for any tool possible to support our neighborhoods. Last year, I applied for a grant from the Michigan State Historic Preservation Office to prepare a study of two mid-century modern neighborhoods for possible historic designation. The SHIPO, the State Historic Preservation Office, picked Plum Brook and Northland Gardens. We know that property values are stronger in historically designated areas, as well as, if there is a real estate turn-down, historic homes, historic neighborhoods rebound sooner. So back to our concerns, property tax and bank foreclosures, and the annual Oakland County Auction. Again, I've outlined this earlier, we have been victimized by the devaluation of homes and the speculators, the flippers, the real estate companies, and so on, that picked up houses very cheap. Many of the tax-foreclosed homes have become rental properties, and numerous owners who bought homes at a very low price appear to be unable to maintain their home, pay the water bill and their property taxes and/or condo association fees. These properties are what we call the second wave. They followed the mortgage crisis, and now we're seeing that many of these people are in tax foreclosure. So how does the tax foreclosure? If you do nothing, it follows this series of events. In the first year, on March 1st, let's say you haven't paid your taxes for a year, on the 1st of March, they become declared delinquent, and an administration fee by the county of 1% is charged. People, of course, are notified all along the way. There's, our treasurer does two notifications, and the county does multiple, a minimum of at least four. On the second year, on March 1st, new fees are added, and the interest rate increases. On May 1st, foreclosure petition is filed with a circuit court, and the owners of the properties are notified. Then in the third year, and again, this is for people who have done nothing, they haven't gone to the treasurer, the county treasurer, and asked to be on the Step Forward Michigan program, or asked to get on a payment program, they've just totally ignored all of the notices. So in January, right after the beginning of the year, there'll be a show clause, hearings are held, giving taxpayers a chance to appeal their foreclosure. In February, goes to court, where the judge, after reviewing the cases, will or will not sign the foreclosure order. And then homeowners have until they're notified, but they also have until March 31st, every year, to pay all their arrears so that they do not lose their home. Around June 1st, cities are notified of foreclosures and have the first right of refusal to take the property by paying all taxes and fees. In mid-August, the city doesn't take the properties, and until two years ago, the city council did not vote to take these properties, they went to the county auction. I have attended the auction, and I have watched as many as 120 properties in Southfield be bought up by speculators, real estate companies, rental operators. I watched one woman buy 15 Southfield condos. And again, at a minimum, these warnings are issued, six warnings, and the foreclosures can be avoided by arranging a tax payment plan, but the person who's delinquent on their taxes must keep up with the payment plan. So I want to give you an example of some of the cases that, and why this is very real for us. So here's case study number one. Prior to the mortgage crisis, this home sold in 2007 for $132,000, sold again in 2012 for $21,000. The owner bought this house in 2012 while delinquent on taxes on another home he owned in Southfield. He failed to pay $9,750,000 in taxes and a water bill on this house, and then, at the same time, $14,000 on his principal residence. The county decided then, we're going to foreclose on these two properties. Here's another one, case number two. This house was sold for, was $104,000 in 2009, when the mortgage crisis hit, it sold for $20,000. It's a very nice home. The owner failed to pay $27,000 plus in taxes, $8,000 water bill. Obviously, if the taxes on this house were much less, but this reflects a payment plan that was not met. The number three, purchased in 2006 for $350,000, sold in 2009 for $74,900, $24,000 in taxes, $1,200 in water bill, county decided to foreclose last spring. Number four is a condo valued at $144,000, purchased for $41,000, $8,200 in taxes, foreclosed this year. Number five, purchased in 2014 at a county tax auction for $21,000. This property had been foreclosed before. The owner failed to pay almost $12,000 in taxes, and he used the property for an illegal marijuana grow operation. When this was discovered, he was arrested, and then, of course, the taxes were never paid on this property. The county foreclosed on it. This home is in such bad shape, it's beyond redemption, it will be torn down. So the NRI has paid, will pay $12,000 here in back taxes, and then will probably pay close to $15,000, depending on what contaminants in the house, lead or asbestos, to demolish this. So it's about a $25,000 loss for the NRI. The owner of four unregistered, number six, unregistered rental homes fell into tax arrears between 2006 and '13, almost $49,000 in taxes, plus water bills, $4,500, were not paid on all four of these homes, and the county treasurer decided to foreclose on them in Number seven, and there are a number of cases like this, we just dealt with one over the weekend, with landlord not doing the right thing. This home was purchased from the US Bank for $10,000, and it's in the Cranbrook neighborhood, and it sold, prior to mortgage foreclosure, it had sold for $167,000. An out-of-town landlord bought the home, he rented it, and didn't pay the taxes. And then the landlord, who has come before council and demanded his home back, did not repair this house, and when a sewer line collapsed, he rigged up a pump and dumped raw sewage into the yard, for some time until the neighbors next door notified us that there was effluent coming into their yard. So the question becomes, you know, what do we do about the hundreds of homes and condos that were sold at the Oakland County Property Auctions, resulting in the underpinning of our neighborhoods? And how do we improve home values? I think I speak for the council, as well as myself and the administration, doing nothing is not an option. And we are taking actions to help our neighborhoods get through the devastation that has been done by forces outside of the city of Southfield. So the formation of the Southfield Neighborhood Revitalization Initiative, or NRI, was created. And this is a partnership between the city council, the nonprofit Housing Board, and Habitat for Humanity. But let me say that the city council has a very minor role in this. City council exercises first right of refusal, per the state law, then transfers the title to the Southfield NRI, which is a development company. The Southfield Nonprofit Housing Board pays the back taxes, water bills, and fees, and finances the renovation costs. The Housing Board is the fiduciary agent in making all of this happen. And the Southfield NRI contracts with Habitat for Humanity to renovate the homes, perform environmental studies. This is, by the way, the environmental studies is not something your typical flipper or landlord does. We have homes that have had a huge amount of asbestos mold and lead removed from them. They bring the houses up to current building codes and sell the homes at market value, thus raising property values. The sale proceeds are recycled back to the Southfield Nonprofit Housing Board, if there are proceeds. Number these houses, the amount of work to restore them exceeds what you can sell the house for. And finally, anyone may buy an NRI home, once they obtain a mortgage approval, they must live in the home. These homes, there's a condition, that they cannot be rented. The owner, they must be owner-occupied for a period of five years. So currently, the Southfield NRI has 97 properties, including vacant lots, and it's demolished four homes, and others are set to be demolished, including the picture I showed you earlier. Neither the city of Southfield, the nonprofit Housing Board, nor the NRI foreclose on properties. Oakland County Treasurer's Office does this, and it's on their judgment, their decision-making. In 2016, the NRI paid almost $1 million in back taxes and water, water bills. So far, in 2017, the NRI has paid $1.1 million in back taxes. To date, the Southfield Nonprofit Housing Board has invested over $4.5 million in home renewal in our community. And the vast majority of these properties were formerly owned by people who purchased homes at greatly reduced prices. homes at greatly reduced prices and immediately, and this is a matter of public record, immediately fell behind in their property taxes and water bills. Almost all of the homes need significant repairs and upgrades. Some of the houses are sold, and again, there are no free houses, to Habitat clients. So where are these houses and what size are they? Well, they're all over the city with a slight concentration in the eight-mile Evergreen area. And they range in size from 900 square feet to 5,400 square feet. So in summary, once again, the Oakland County Treasurer's Office makes the determination about foreclosure. The city does not foreclose or evict homeowners. The city takes first right of refusal and does the brownfield program. The NRI, SNRI, in partnership with Habitat rehabilitates upgrades or demolishes and the goal is not to profit, but to break even on home rehabilitation. In some cases, the SNRI puts more money into a home than they can get back. And obviously, homes that are demolished are a total loss. So here's a success story. This house is on Beach Haven. Unbelievably, $84,750 owed in back taxes and almost $2700 water bill when the county foreclosed on it in 2016. After rehabilitation, the NRI poured 121,000 into this, including all new systems in the house, new driveway landscaping. The house sold for 250,000, so the, the NRI made a slight profit on this house. These houses are turn, create ready. They're totally rehabbed with new electrical plumbing, HVAC, kitchen cupboards, granite countertops, flooring doors, windows, whatever. Here's a loss. This is a, I didn't get until later or early, just late before this meeting, the actual picture of what this house looked like when it was foreclosed. It looks pretty good here, but this is a picture that's probably 15 years old. The NRI took possession of this mold-filled damaged home in 2016, paid water bills and back taxes of 80, about 8,500, insurance, demolition, management fees. This is a total loss of about $26,000. Again, the SNRI is not looking to profit, they are looking to break even. So these homes are placed on the real estate multi-list, the homes are sold to date and have had, that have been sold to date have multiple bidders and the SNRI hosts occasional open houses. And if you're interested in one of these houses, I would contact, I would suggest you contact a realtor who has access to the multi-list. They're not on Zillow and that sort of thing. And if you can secure a mortgage, you're a candidate to buy one of these rehabbed houses. Then finally, something that we're going to be kicking off, we need a public hearing in January, will be our neighborhood enterprise zone. We have identified two areas of the city for the enterprise zone. Again, this is a state law. Communities are not allowed to do the whole city. You can do about 15% of your residential area for a neighborhood enterprise zone. And the northeastern corner of the city from Cotelpa to 13 Mile Road, from Greenfield in about four or five blocks was selected. And then section 34 in the south central end of the city. These areas were selected because they have the largest concentration of homes that were built before 1960 and have modest assessed values. So how does this program work? It's voluntary. The city and county taxes will be reduced by, it's a tax abatement in effect, will be reduced by 17.2 mils for up to 12 years. And again, this is voluntary. In turn, the property owners must make major home improvements by licensed contractors. Improvements must meet our building codes. Improvements may include new roofs, wiring, plumbing, windows, foundation, all that sort of thing. And the credits only include material costs, not labor. So this in sum is what we are doing with our, to buck up our neighborhoods, to renew our housing stock, increase property values so that we can continue to live in a community that's attractive, safe, and relatively blight-free. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's a good presentation, gave a very good overview of our program. You have a very responsible leadership here in the city of Southfield from the council, the mayor, and also our administration. This is a, our neighborhoods are our showpiece. Our neighborhoods are why people move to the city of Southfield. The neighborhoods are why people continue to live in Southfield. There are consequences to homeownership and the fact that our, your city has decided to purchase these homes before they went on the block to speculators who would, who knows what they would turn them into, but we know from our particular standpoint, we will turn these homes and lots into livable and tax-paying entities again. So I'm not sure, I know that certain words have passed, but I think the mayor gave a very good overview, but we do not foreclose on anyone. And we are not empowered, empowered to foreclose on anyone, but we are empowered to utilize our resources for the betterment of the city of Southfield and that's what we have done.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
If I could just add in, actually this past weekend, I was approached by several individuals who have benefited from this program. Some, while they not, may not have bought one of these homes, they, they live next door to one or in a neighborhood and they've seen an increase in, in the prop, in their property values and how the neighborhood looks. You know, once, and I drove by some of the homes and once, once you see some, even some of the landscaping that is done as part of the renovations, it's encouraging the other neighbors to increase some of their landscaping and to improve even the outside of their homes. And then, and then just, just this morning, someone actually called me that they put a bid on one of the homes that was, that just went to, to market and they are excited. They've, they just moved back to Michigan from out of state and they've been living in the past few months in, in their parents' home with, with their children because they said they wanted to live in Southfield and no other community and they were waiting for homes and they, and they were able to find one of these SNRI homes. And they, it's move-in ready, they don't have to put any additional expenses in and they were very thankful for this program. So there are, while there are, there are some occasional, there are some people who may not be ecstatic about the program, there are a lot of benefits that are helping revitalize the neighborhoods. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, you have some appointments?
Nothing else at this time.
Reappointments and appointments, yeah.
Presentations, no. Yes, I do have appointments. Thank you.
Thought I had the wrong package here for a minute.
This evening, I am asking council to approve the reappointment of Rosemary Allen, if she'd come forward to the Parks and Recreation Board, and we did have her resignation on the Parks and Rec Board, so I'm asking for approval of the appointment of Catherine, Kathleen rather, McNellis, if Kathleen would come forward.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to move the reappointment of Rosemary Allen and the appointment of Kathleen McNellis to the Parks and Rec Board.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Mr. Frazier. They will approve the appointments and reappointments as stated. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? It is sole move, Mr. Mayor.
All right. The clerk will swear both of Ms. Allen and Ms. McNellis in and then the council would like to greet you, so when you're done.
Yes, I want to greet them.
Yeah, maybe ask where it was. I'll come and find it, maybe they didn't move it.
We just said it in the meeting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I would tell you, concern.
Hi sweetheart, how you doing? I'll call you sweetheart?
Yeah.
These days, huh?
Stop that love field.
Can't still, I got it.
Look at her.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming to me.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I want to ask you a question. Can you explain what are your degrees?
Congratulations.
Okay. So you're a miracle player? Okay. All right. What are you doing on the work? Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Keep up the good work.
Hey, how are you?
Congratulations.
See friendly faces.
It's at December 15th.
Are you?
It's scheduled for 15th. I don't have anything on that.
That's just a schedule. That's where our visioning session.
February 11th?
No, 15th.
What happened to 11th?
Okay, we have no minutes. We will now move into the consent agenda. One item should be added to the consent agenda, item G. It will be the resolution regarding the neighborhood revitalization tax foreclosure program. That will be item G, which was added by way of our study session. The first item is authorization to purchase coal patch material for the Public Works Department. On October 3, 2017, the Row Commission of Oakland County received sealed bids for the purchase of coal patch for the, for the 2018 season. Using this non-competitive contract, using this cooperative contract provides the city with the most advantageous pricing by combining its requirements with those of other cities. It is anticipated that the city will need coal patch for 2018 in the amount of 800 tons. The low bid for this particular contract came in at $72,400. Funds for this item is provided in our 2017 and 18 highway budget and will be required and will be requested in the 2018 and 2019 budget, highway and street budget. The next item on our agenda is the receipt of bids for standby emergency snow removal services for the streets and highways. For the snow, on October 12, the purchasing department advertised a bid for the standby emergency removal service for the streets and highways department. Of the 18 vendors who downloaded this specification, purchasing received a single bid from Rotunda Construction of Farmington Hills. Public Works has used this standby contractor as needed in the past and, and the fiscal impact is that for the funds totaling 118,000 are available in the 2018, 2017 and 18 budget. It is recommended by the, recommended that this build, the recommended builder has successfully worked with our staff over the, over the previous years. Item C, consent agenda item C, brownfield redevelopment plan and tax increment financing plan and development reimbursement agreement for Southfield neighborhood revitalization project for 2017. The city, the city staff is in receipt of a request from the Neighborhood Revitalization Initiative LLC, provenances of the NRI, Southfield Neighborhood Revitalization Project 2017 for approval of their brownfield revitalization plan and tax increment financing plan. This project serves as yet another positive example of the city of Southfield contribution to the reinvestment of our neighborhoods and economic comeback of southeast Michigan. The purpose of the brownfield redevelopment tax increment plan is to provide for the redevelopment of these housing units and reimbursement of related expenses, including the following base, including the following: base land environmental activities, do care activities, lead and asbestos activities, site preparation, demolition, infrastructure improvement, brownfield plan and related fees. And that was for 56 pieces of property for this year, single-family homes. This item was reviewed at the November 27 regular city council meeting. Consent item number D, approval data sharing agreement for participation in the Michigan Infrastructure Asset Management Pilot Program. In essence, there is no fiscal impact beyond the limited staff time to enter into the agreement to participate in this pilot. The city of Southfield is participating in the Michigan Infrastructure Asset Management Program from SimCog, for the SimCog region. The pilot initiated by the, by the Governor's 21st Century Infrastructure Committee acts as a first step to creating a statewide asset management system for Michigan infrastructure. Consent agenda item E, the new medical marijuana regulation op-out resolution. The Michigan legislature has enacted Public Act 281 to license and regulate medical marijuana growers, processors, provisioning centers, secure transporters and compliance facilities and pursuant to the Michigan zoning enabling act 2006 PA 100, the Home Rule City Act of 19, the Home Rule City Act, the 1909 PA 279 and Michigan Medical Marijuana Licensing Act of 2016, has the authority to reasonably regulate concerning, regulate concerning certain uses of property related to the medical marijuana to protect the public health, safety and welfare in a manner consistent with the reference ads, acts. I'll, it is recommended- Approval Data Sharing Agreement for Participation in the Michigan Infrastructure Asset Management Pilot Program. In essence, there is no fiscal impact beyond the limited staff time to enter into the agreement to participate in this pilot. The City of Southfield is participating in the Michigan Infrastructure Asset Management Program from SimcoG, for the SimcoG region. The pilot initiated by the, by the Governor's Twenty First Century Infrastructure Committee acts, acts as a first step to creating a statewide asset management system for Michigan infrastructure. Consent agenda, consent agenda item E. The New Medical Marijuana Regulation Op-Out Resolution. The Michigan Legislature has enacted Public Act two eighty-one to license and regulate medical marijuana growers, processors, provisioning centers, secure transporters, and compliance facilities. And pursuant to the Michigan Zoning Isap Enabling Act, twenty oh six PA one hundred, the Home Rule City Act of nineteen the Home Rule, Home Rule City Act, the nineteen oh nine PA two seventy-nine, and Michigan Medical Marijuana Licensing Act of twenty sixteen has the authority to reasonably regulate concerning, regulate concerning certain uses of property related to the medical marijuana to protect the public health, safety, and welfare in a manner consistent with the reference ads, acts. Our, it is recommended that a council of effect adopt an official resolution representing the city's stance on this matter. Specifically, the city will specifically respect to opting out of the Medical Marijuana Facility Licensing Act, which will provide greater clarity to handling these solicitations in the near future. Consider, consent agenda item, agenda item F. City Council Visioning Session for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. The City Council President has indicated a desire to conduct a city visioning session on Friday, December twenty eighteen, December fifteen, twenty seventeen, at ten AM to ten, ten AM to two PM to be held in the meeting room of the Southfield Public Library. The mayor, city council, and city appointees will be, will outline goals for twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen in the, in the, at that meeting. It is recommended that the following resolution be adopted to establish a regular meeting for the purpose of conducting the city visioning session on Friday, twenty, Friday, Friday, December fifteen, twenty seventeen, from ten AM to twenty, ten AM to two PM. The item added was the a resolution regarding the Neighborhood Revitalization Tax Program. And with that, council, have you?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, miss.
I'd like to move that we approve consent items, agenda items A, B, C, D, E, F, and G.
Support.
It's been moved by, by Mr. Cruz and supported by Mr. Frazier that we approve consent agenda items A through G. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It so moved, the consent is approved. We will now move into public hearing.
We don't have any.
Oh, I'm sorry. There is no public hearing. There are no site plans. We would now move into communications. Before we move into communications, I will read this statement, and I will do this before every communications. All speakers shall make personal or impertinent attacks upon any officer, employee, or city council member or other elected officials. That is unrelated to the, the manner in which the officer, employee, or city council member or other elected official performs his or her duties. No persons are used in threatening or abusive language when addressing the city council. Any person who violates this section shall be directed by the presiding officer to be orderly and silent. If a person addressing this council refuses to become silent when so directed, so such person may be deemed by the presiding officer to have committed a breach of the peace by disrupting and impeding the orderly conduct of the public meeting of the city council. It may be ordered by the presiding officer to leave the meeting. If the person refuses to leave as directed, the presiding officer may direct any law enforcement officer who is present to escort the violator from the meeting. The first individual on the communication is Ms. Pamela Gerald.
I'm not sure that I understood what you read, but, okay, it must be something you've read at every meeting. I'm not sure what you're alluding to. Pamela Gerald, P.O. Box one fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven dash zero one five five. I've been around in the city for a very long time. I have never ran for office, but I'm probably one of the few residents that have come to a lot of city council meetings over the years. And ninety percent of the time, I was the only resident that sat in the audience. People come for the fanfare of appointments, reappointments, and then they leave. I'm here for the duration. I just wanted to say that residents have often reached out to me to solve their issues for them. And I think we do need a new day in Southfield. We need a new day in Southfield where people can go to their elected officials and not community advocates to get some of their issues resolved. Now, as far as this tax foreclosure thing, I'm not understanding all of the ramifications of it, but I want to get familiar with how did we get here? What needs to happen in this city? There does need to be more transparency. There does need to be more inclusion. And there also needs to be a little bit more civility amongst the council, the city administration, the employees, and the residents. I was offended at the inauguration when the mayor did his state of the city address already at an inauguration. That wasn't the time for pomp and circumstance about what you've done. At the same time, I want to applaud Councilman Michael Mandelbaum for saying that the city needed to revisit what they did in nineteen ninety-nine. And that was to form a charter committee to make sure that the laws that govern the city of Southfield are benefiting everyone. Kudos on that. There was one charter committee formed in nineteen ninety-nine. I was privy to be Councilman Sidney Lance's appointee, who has been the longest-serving member on council. And he had confidence in me that I could attempt to do a good job. So I want to stop all of this pomp and circumstance from up here. Whatever issues people bring before this council at this podium, it deserves your careful look. Maybe you need to do a seminar on how to buy a house, when you buy, when you get a mortgage, the thing about the taxes, and including taxes in the mortgage. But something needs to be done. This is an embarrassment for the city. And maybe some of you now will start listening to what I've been saying over the years. Do the right thing. Start talking a little bit more. And that's all I have to say about that.
Mr. Gerard Mullin?
Good evening. My name is Gerard Mullin. Southfield Citizens Oversight Committee. Post Office Box one fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven. There is an old adage in political science circles that states that the two most powerful government entities in this country are the U.S. Supreme Court and your local zoning board of appeals. Tonight, I'd like to talk about the latter. In this case, Southfield ZBA. And I will start off by quoting from the city charter, section four point one six B. "The zoning board of appeals shall consist of five members to be selected by the council, none of whom shall hold any other appointive or elective office," unquote. Roy Bell, after serving on this council, concurrently served on the ZBA and the Planning Commission in violation of the charter for many, many years. How do you folks explain this? How can something like this happen year after year after year on your watch? I think I know why. I'll give it a stab. Here goes. I've been told that all freshman council persons receive two tools from the city clerk upon taking office. First, a copy of the city charter, and secondly, a rubber stamp. Has anyone on this council ever read their charter? I doubt it. Instead, you folks depend on your rubber stamp. I'd like to add a footnote to this presentation. That there is a provision in state law, Public Act one ten of two thousand six, section six oh one, subsection four, which I have here in hand, that states that one ZBA member also may be a member on the planning commission. But it's an option, a maybe, and not a state mandate. So therefore, state law in this case does not impact nor preclude nor limit in any way section four point one six B of the city charter. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Greg Keeler?
Greg Keeler, twenty-five, one seven zero, Circle Drive, Southfield, Michigan. I come because of, I've been noticing for the last four or five months that handicap parking has been used to park in any which way you want to. The handicap area where the crosswalk, where you should be able to walk through there with a handicap walker, has been cars parked there with, that are not handicap. Myers has gone to the point of putting up markers in the way so you can stop you from being in front of it. Lawrence Tech has stopped you from being in their parking lot near their football field so you can't come in there because there's only handicaps only. Kroger's, people think that's the place where you drop off baskets. Where you have the street curbs that you have where the ramps go down. People decide that they should sit there in front of stores and park and wait. If you go to Kroger's, it's notorious. Subway's is notorious in that same area. Myers is notorious the same thing. If you're a handicapped and a walker, how do you step off the curb? Isn't that broken down so you can come down off of it easily into the area as opposed to somebody sitting there? I think we should change the fine from a two-hundred-dollar fine or a two-fifty-fine to a six-hundred-dollar fine. That's what they have in Georgia. Georgia, you don't have this problem. Six-hundred-dollar fine will wake your mind up from this. And I do have pictures to show you that vehicles have been parked in the center where you're not supposed to be parked at, that is a crosswalk for handicaps. And I do have pictures of Myers. You can go up to Myers now, any day, and you'll see the two cones parked there because cars have been parking there consistently in the way. And I just want to know, you know, if you're in a walker, how are you supposed to get out your car? If you got a car parked in the center. If somebody has a, parked in a handicap spot with a expired sticker saying nineteen fifty, I mean, two thousand fifteen, why are they there in a handicap spot? Or sitting there with a air filter for the car? These are not handicap people. And they shouldn't be in our way, and they shouldn't be in the way of blocking. Crossing the freeway on Ten Mile coming to Southfield City Center from Circle Drive. That crosswalk goes down, that sidewalk is very narrow, and you're right by the freeway. There's nothing that'll stop you from falling over. And I seen last week a woman going across there on a bicycle. On a bicycle, you're over that little bit of bar that they have there on the side. So that is a very dangerous spot. And I would like to see that changed. The one on Evergreen, you got a six-foot spot between you and the curb, so you have distance to fall. But there you do that, you have distance to fall over. So I would just like you to take a look at, seeing some of the changes you should make. And then I would also like to encourage six-hundred-dollar fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keeler. What were those locations? I'm, I'm a hundred percent sympathetic to, because I visited with my brother several years ago, and I, and I had to transport him to the doctor a couple of times. And, and we were frustrated when handicap spots were taken up by non-handicap cars, and all those cars did not have stickers. And I suffered the consequence that he and I parked in further away than we should have had to. So those locations, can we?
Myers, Myers on Telegraph Road.
Well, I know we have the parking enforcement, I frequently see them there.
But you will, if you go up there, you will see, and I have pictures to show you, you have cones parked in the area in the walkway to stop people from parking there. People kept parking there. Myers, which has the pullovers to your curb.
Right.
So you can load up. People still park in front of Myers. I mean, not in front of Myers, but in front of Sam's Club. Sam's Club has a pull-off to the side, but we'll park right in front of it. Kroger's, terrible.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, maybe have that list either given tonight or left at the clerk's office whenever so that we can.
Yeah, why don't you provide that list and provide it to the clerk, and we'll make sure it gets to the, definitely the parking enforcement individual, but anywhere else we're finna see that needs to go.
Okay. And this occurs not just, because the, the biggest problem is at six PM, that's when cars park, parallel, horizontal, every kind of way you can think of.
Okay.
In those spots. So they look at six o'clock, y'all off the clock.
Okay, we'll look at it. Provide us with a list of locations and, and your concern, and we'll make sure you get it looked at.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rodney Hayes, Ronald Hayes.
Good evening. My name is Ronald Hayes. By three-three-two Pleasant View Court, West Bloomfield Township. Dear sir and madam, thank you for the opportunity to be able to address this council tonight. I have a very serious issue that in matter that is a great concern to me and my family. Last time I addressed this council, November twenty-seven, two thousand seventeen, and I expressed the desire for a second chance. I told you of my circumstances, and I was hoping that the resolution being submitted by Woman Mor, Woman Counsel Morris would have been received and, and also include two thousand seventeen and two thousand sixteen housing. Since I got, since you got a look at me, since that time I did a little homework to get a look at you guys. I couldn't help but take another look to see this council. Some of you I know work very hard at what you do and actually participate on several different housing committees. Let me just name those of particular to me and to my family, the Southfield Nonprofit Housing Corporation and the Southfield Neighborhood Revitalization Initiative. Both, I believe, are, from what I read, are to restore, bring safety, preserve, upgrade, increase, improve properties in the city of Southfield. And also bring property values back to the city of Southfield. Those are all the terms that I've seen and were mentioned about those two programs here. I've read all the accolades that was bestowed upon the members here in this room tonight that serve on one or both or all of those programs or those committees. Good people, good programs. However, something is missing. Something is left out. Let me explain. A family man, a deacon, a vice chairman of his church, a manager of the largest ozonation water treatment plant in the Midwest. I too, as I am educated, graduated from a fine institution, Wayne State University, with distinction.
Mr. Hayes, your time is up. Thank you, sir.
You didn't take anybody else's time, and they all ran over. Every single one of them went five and six minutes. Every, I counted it, I looked.
I have a clock here.
I counted. Give me a minute, and I'll be done.
Give me a minute and I'll be done.
That's it, sir. Thank you.
A half o'clock right there, I seen every one of them went six minutes. You want to play it back? Every single one of them went six minutes.
Mr. Hakeem Lowry.
Hakeem Lowry, 23266, Rancho Drive. I am here for obviously the same thing as Mr. Hayes. You know, I'm just asking for a city council to, you know, draft a resolution that will include 2016 and 17 tax foreclosures. Many of us have the money to pay back. It's not a situation where we even need a payment plan. We just need an opportunity to pay back. This will keep, this will keep, in fact, the city more stable because we are already homeowners. We are already owner occupants. I don't, I'm not renting my property. I'm not, you know, have a grow house in there. I live there with my two daughters. They go to school at, you know, in the schools. And I'm just asking for an opportunity to pay back. The only reason to not pay back, the only reason that the NRI would not accept my money must be for profit because they're actually going to get money back into their pockets. You know, I had a sick mother. She had dementia. That could happen to anybody. I worked at the same time I tried to take care of my mother and it just became impossible. I became, I did get behind on my taxes. I since then have the opportunity that my taxes, I think, are like 14,000 behind. I actually have the money to pay back and keep the city beautiful. So I'm just asking for the resolution, the NRI resolution, to include the 2016 and 2017. After that, if you move forward from there, you won't have anybody falling back from, you know, from behind if you draft new rules saying that, you know, it's no investors, for example. You know, I'm not investor. I'm a homeowner who wanted to live in the city. I hit a rough time and I'm just asking that the council be able to address the NRI in a way to work with the homeowners, at least, I mean, it doesn't have to work with them, just be able to pay back. As I said, we have, you know, we have the news here. I've been contacted by the news. That's destabilization for the city. I mean, when news people hear this, when people hear this, do you think they want to live in, move to Southfield? That's gonna be, that's destabilizing just as much as anything else that we're talking about. So my concern is lawsuits that can be brought up to the city. I don't want to see it. I don't want to have a lawsuit brought and then everybody's taxes go up because we have to settle a lawsuit. I don't want to have, you know, I don't want to have, you know, council people who work very hard to be in front of the news cameras because all that's going to do is actually destabilize the neighborhood, make people not want to move here.
Ms. Lowry. Thank you. Thank you. Is Ms. Ford available? Ms. Kathy Barlow. Ms. Kathy Barlow. Mr. Greg Dieterjean.
Hello, I'm Gregory Dieterjean, 28, 108 Glasgow Street. The reason I'm here tonight is because I've lived in Southfield since 2004 before the crash and I seen the highs and the lows in Southfield. I'm here to discuss what the mayor and the city have done since the crash in 2008 in my neighborhood and the two programs that they brought to my neighborhood which has improved our neighborhood drastically. Before I speak about the two programs, I wanted to state that since the crash of 2008, I've seen our neighborhood take a major downturn. And we've been trying to improve our neighborhood since then with a neighborhood Facebook page where we try to open lines of communication, look for each other, look out for each other and help one another out as much as we can. But with the two programs that the mayor and the city have brought out, it has helped us speed up the process drastically. The first program, which happened both in 2016 and 2017, was Rock the Block. So Rock the Block is a program that helps residents improve curb appeal of their homes. The program includes, but is not limited to fixing cement, privacy fence, gutters, landscaping, painting of homes, and so on. This program was a great program for our neighborhood for we got to meet new neighbors, build a better community, and improve the look of our neighborhood. The second program is the Southfield Neighborhood Revitalization Initiative. In my neighborhood that I know of, there have been four houses that followed this program. Two of those houses, we actually had to have neighborhood cleanups before this because the residents weren't taking care of them and it was an eyesore to our residents. So we took it upon our community to clean those up. With the Southfield teaming up with Habitat for Humanity, two of the houses have been completely done inside and out and look amazing. One of them has been sold and new families have moved in and have shown their appreciation to the neighborhood. With that said, I am confident in the programs that the mayor and the city have put together to improve the neighborhood and the community. The mayor has shown that he cares for the city and its residents. I thank him and the city for all that you've done. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That concludes our communications section.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. I had two people that requested to speak tonight with your permission. Gilbert Borman wanted to speak and Pastor Carlisle Fielding Stewart III. I don't know if they're still here, but they had asked.
Okay, we'll take them in order that you just presented.
Good evening. Thank you very much for having me today. I represent the homeowner at 2855.
Could you give us your name and address, please?
I represent the homeowner at 2855.
For some reason, I can't hear these people when they're up there talking.
Hello? Is this better? I represent the homeowner at...
I'd like to have that mic louder if we can get it louder.
Okay, I'll speak up. I represent the homeowner at 28... Can I have the full three minutes, please?
You get three minutes?
Okay, thank you. I represent the homeowner.
Give us your name and your address, your business address.
My business address is Box 250325 Franklin, Michigan 48025. My name is Gilbert Borman. I'm an attorney representing the homeowner at 2855 Heritage Lane. You know, the young man who just spoke before me was talking about what I would call good home improvement. And it doesn't square with some of the, in the week that I've been, since I spoke here last week, I've learned an awful lot more about how Southfield is doing quote-unquote revitalization. And when you are taking houses that don't need to be fixed and fixing them, something is wrong. When you are putting roofs on homes that just had new roofs installed, something's wrong. And I'm letting you know that if you were to poll the people in the room, in fact, I invite the people in the room behind me who would like to see an amnesty program for people who had their homes taken in 2016 and 2017 to raise their hands, I would invite them to do that right now because I don't feel... Raise your hands. This is what the community really wants. They want to save the peoples in their homes. And the consent agreement that was passed through today, it didn't provide for any kind of amnesty. And I think that what is needed is amnesty. And it doesn't cost the city anything because you will be paid back dollar for dollar for any amnesty extended to these homeowners. I implore you, please, fix this. This is not what the community wants. And my client is willing to fight here, fight in court, wherever, but we want to save the city money. We don't want to cost the city money. This is the most cost-effective place to try and fix this problem. And that's why I'm here. I'm here to keep the bill low, not cause higher expense. But I know that my client is fighting for her home. And it's wrong for a city to be taking people's homes and profiting enormously from the hard-earned equity of people's entire lives. It doesn't look right. It doesn't, it doesn't pass any form of muster in terms of how people, other people looking at this will see it. And when the city is making tens of thousands of dollars and realtors are making money reselling these homes, it's all part of one program. It doesn't look right. This is not bringing improvement to the city. It is besmirching the city's reputation. I implore you, create an amnesty program. Create an amnesty program as fast as you can. Thank you very much for your time.
Pastor Stewart.
He's not here. All righty.
No, he's not here.
Communications are closed.
Thank you.
Next item on the...
Thank you.
You're welcome. Council?
Yes, Mr. President?
Mr. Mandelbaum.
I just wanted to remind people that tomorrow, Southfield's having a job fair from 10:00 to 2:00 PM here in Parks and Rec in Room 115. These are for jobs that the city currently has available. Many of them are police and fire, but there's some other ones as well, administrative work, secretarial work. So if you are looking for a job or know someone looking for a job, please send them down to the Parks and Rec Department, Room 115, tomorrow between 10:00 and 2:00. Also, this week is the last week for yard waste collection during your regularly scheduled trash pickup. So please make sure that you get everything to the curb this week with your regular garbage. Speaking of yard waste, I wanted to give a special shout-out and thanks to the mayor. I understand that this past weekend was the last big rake and there was a homeowner who was omitted for whatever reason. And because there were no more big rakes, she emailed the mayor and said, "What am I supposed to do? I need help." And the mayor went out himself this morning. I think he was there by 9:00 or 10:00 AM with a rake and actually raked the entire front lawn, bagged the leaves to make sure that this homeowner will have a healthy lawn come spring. So kudos to Mayor, Mayor Seiver for that. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
One clarification. Supposed to be December 9th, the weekend is December 9th. 9th is Friday. It'd have to start on a Monday.
It starts, well, we'll conclude on that Friday.
It can't start on the end of the week. Supposed to be the 9th.
Calendar.
Well, pardon?
It's Friday, the 8th.
Friday, December 8th.
This whole week, it ends on Friday.
That's regular trash collection.
Give me that again. What I heard was from Larry was that the week of the 9th was the last, when I see in the calendar, the 9th is a Friday.
What we were told some weeks ago was that it would be December 8th, which is the south end of the city. That's their regular trash day.
That's not the beginning of the week. That's when it starts.
Today, for 12 to 13 Mile, today was the last day of leaf pickup.
Well, no, actually, I don't know what I'm...
And it rolls right through Friday.
The date would have to start today. It'd been the last week. And that's not the date. In other words, weeks start at the beginning of the week and the date starts at...
Right. And so today was the last day for Monday trash collection for yard waste. Depending on your day, Friday is south of 9 Mile.
I don't know about south of 9 Mile. I'm talking about people...
That's Friday.
People who are asking me. I'm sorry, but I told them, you know, you've got another week because the 9th was a Friday. And that's the number that it was thrown around. I don't know if I'm all wet or not, but, you know, a week starts on a date. Now, what, if you're at the end of the week, I don't care when the pickup is, but that means that the person who gets picked up on Monday is not included. Is that correct? Who, somebody?
The information I have that I'm looking at says that it will, it was extended until December 8th, which is Friday.
So that'd be the last day that it would be offered.
That's what the mix-up is.
Right. It's the last day.
The last week is usually the way it's put though.
The last week starts today and ends Friday with pickup.
Right.
Well...
Okay.
See, a lot of people, and that's from me, but I mean, you've got, you've got a lot of trees that haven't even dropped yet. You've got a lot of people who haven't cleaned their leaves yet if you go through the neighborhoods.
Well, that's an administrative consideration if they want to extend it. I know that we publicized, several weeks ago, I asked about this because it had consequences for the yards that were raked on Saturday to make sure that those bags were picked up today or tomorrow. And so we, I was told December 8th.
Well, Larry told me that he was working with the contractor to see what was the latest in which he could get pickup. And so I guess I got the number from Larry, beginning of, the beginning of 9th, the week of the 9th. So, I mean, you can shake your head, but I'm just saying is, I think you're going to have a lot of problems in that, that there's a lot of people that haven't raked and a lot of people whose trees haven't fallen yet. And we got a late, late summer and fall in this community.
The last I heard from the department...
Do what you do, but I'm just trying to tell you that if you go through the neighborhoods, I don't care about the big rake or any other rake. I'm just telling you, there's people who have not had time because the maples haven't even dropped yet. All right? There's a lot of trees that haven't dropped yet.
I didn't set the rules or the date.
Well, council sets the rules.
Okay. Ms. Morris, go ahead.
Just a couple of things. First, I just want to thank the council for passing the Neighborhood Revitalization Tax Foreclosure Program Resolution that we've been talking about for some time now. Second, to any homeowner that's listening tonight, if you're behind in your taxes, please seek assistance now. You can contact Step Forward Michigan. You can contact your treasurer, your local treasurer here in the city of Southfield or the Oakland County Treasurer. The Human Services Department has access to programs and resources. You can call me. I run a nonprofit organization that's a HUD Housing Counseling Agency. You can, we can find resources and programs that you may be eligible for. Don't ignore the letters or the notices that you receive regarding your delinquency. The city does not want your home. I want to reiterate what the mayor said earlier. We are, however, serious about neighborhood revitalization and improving our property values and we need everyone to pay their taxes in order for us to do that. Finally, the Southfield NRI has come to this honorable body for approval to administer the Neighborhood Stabilization Tax Foreclosure Program and approval to secure financing for the program. As a council member who voted to support the SNRI in these efforts, I just want to formally and publicly request that the SNRI give all homeowners that reside in their homes, those from 2016 and 2017, the right to buy back their homes. I know it was stated earlier that the NRI doesn't necessarily have to adhere to the resolution, but I have not yet to date seen a resolution that has been set forth that has not been adopted. So I am encouraged that the SNRI will adhere to this one as well. Thank you.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes, two things. One is the leaf pickup. If I recall right, the reason for the ending is the places where they dump the leaves closes and they're bound by theirs because can't store them over at the yard all winter long. So we're victims of when the place where they dump the leaves closes for the year. The other thing is we're coming up on the holiday season and I want to make sure that I get this out. We're really concerned about the crime in the city of Southfield. So when you get a present, and I'm sure there are going to be a lot of people that get large screen TVs, they're going to get expensive gifts... So, when you get a, a present that's, and I'm sure there are going to be a lot of people that get large screen TVs, they're gonna get expensive gifts and then you put the boxes out for the recycling to pick up, I would encourage people to cut the boxes up and make sure that you're not advertising, "Hey, I just got a 72-inch TV that, and I work all day long." So, you might want to do that to help the police, help us in keeping the crime down. So, just don't advertise that you've got something expensive that some person coming down the street that has larceny on their minds can pick your house out. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
I gave my report earlier, but I didn't neglect to recognize the two donors of the bags, the yard waste bags. So, I would like to acknowledge that Lowe's Home Depot and Home Depot, both of our Southfield locations supplied the yard waste bags for our big rake again this year. And I have to, besides Southfield School students and Lawrence Tech students, there was a gentleman who came every single week. As a matter of fact, he raked yards during the week and his name is Robert John Cox. So, I just want to give a shout out to Robert that he went above and beyond. Obviously, he likes to rake leaves.
All right, thank you. Administration?
Yes, Mr. President. I have two additional items. The first, I'm requesting that council approve to assign the contract from HD Supply Water Works to Core and Main for water main installation and repair parts. The city is currently under contract to purchase water main installation and repair parts from HD Supply Water Works for the period of August 29, 2017 through August 28, 2018. HD Supply Water Works was recently acquired from its parents' company, HD Supply, and has been renamed Core and Main. The acquisition will not impact the terms of our existing agreement. We're just requesting for this resolution that council authorize the assignment or of, of the contract with HD Supply and repairs to Core and Main.
Counsel, your pleasure.
I move that we approve the recommendation from the administration to assign a contract from HD Supply Water Works to Core and Main for water main installation and repair parts.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Frazier, supported by Mr. Cruz, that we accept the administration's recommendation that we assign the contract from HD Water Works to Core and Main. All in support?
Aye.
Opposed? Move, so move.
And the second item. As we discussed in our closed-door session early, earlier this evening, we are requesting that City Council act as required pursuant to Public Act 152 of 2011 and adopt the basis for which our employees will be charged health care. And we are proposing that, that the city rec, that the city move that to the 80/20 options with employees paying 20% of their active illustrative or premium depending upon the plan selected.
Counsel, your pleasure.
I move that we approve the recommendation from the administrator about the employees' health insurance contributions to 80/20.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Frazier, supported by Ms.
Morris.
Morris, that we accept the Public Funded Health Insurance Contribution Act from the administration. All, all in support?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
We have.
Aye, I was opposed.
Okay.
Can we just do a roll call, Mr. President?
Yes, do a roll call, please.
Cruz?
Yes.
Ficassi?
Yes.
Frazier?
Yes.
Morris?
She's not very loud. She's not very loud.
Taylor?
Uh, no.
Mandelbaum?
No.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Resolution passed.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Attorney?
Mr. President, last week at the November 27th council meeting, council approved two rezoning requests. The first was on behalf of Yeshiva Bathijahuda and the second was the Al Wazir Properties LLC. Council did approve both of those rezonings and we neglected, I take responsibility as well, we neglected to have you assign ordinance numbers to those rezonings and then introduce those ordinance amendments. So, what I have prepared for you this evening are two recommended resolutions. One for each of those rezonings. One assigns ordinance number 1685 to the Yeshiva Bathijahuda rezoning with respect to property on Greenfield Road. And then, if, if council is so inclined to then introduce that ordinance amendment. And then, the second would be ordinance 1686 for the Al Wazir LLC property and that, that was rezoning that property up on 12 Mile, the parking.
Second one was 68?
1686.
1686.
1686.
1686. And, and those ordinance numbers did come from the clerk's office, so.
I'll move that 1685 be read by its title.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Ficassi, supported by Mr. Mandelbaum, that reintroduce ordinance number 1685. All in support?
Aye.
Aye.
I move that 1685 be introduced.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Ficassi and supported by Mr. Mandelbaum that we introduce ordinance number 1685. All in support?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Now, we get to in the introduction of ordinance number 1686.
1686 be read by its title.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Ficassi and supported by Mr. Mandelbaum that we introduce ordinance number 1686. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? So carried.
I move that we, that ordinance number 686 be enacted. Which one I, I mean.
1686?
1686, right. Yeah, be enacted. Support?
It's been moved by Mr. Cruz and supported by Mr. Mandelbaum.
I think he said enacted, if I, if I heard right.
He said enacted, sir.
It's introduced.
Right. Introduced, right, sir.
He said introduced.
Okay. Sounds like enacted.
Yeah, that's, it was moved by Mr. Cruz and enacted by, I mean, and seconded by Mr. Mandelbaum that we introduce ordinance number 1686. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So, so move this. We'll move on to the next item. Madam Clerk, you have an items?
No, it's just good to have Councilman Cruz back with us this evening.
Thank you, Clerk Hawkins. And to the council and everyone and residents, anyone listening. Got a lot of well wishes and phone calls and text messages and they were very, were much, were very well much received from me because I certainly could use the encouragement along the way. So, thanks, everybody.
City Treasurer, Planner, Assessor, City Engineer. The schedule, we have nothing to schedule. We have no ordinances. Meetings adjourned.